I would like to call the special meeting of the city council to order. City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Mora.
Here.
Councilmember Sarno.
Here.
Councilmember Trugillo.
Here.
Mayor Protenzamora.
Here.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Here. Okay, public comments will be considered after item number three on the agenda to allow for interested persons to receive information during the general plan update presentation. Item number three, general plan update presentation. I would like to call on our city manager, Ray Cruz.
Thank you and good morning, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. This study session was scheduled at the city council's direction at the last study session on the general plan held on January 5th. The council expressed desire to hear more from the public through input and more discussion-like format. Therefore, staff recommends that the mayor open public comments at this time. Staff will be able to address issues during and following public comments. Thank you.
Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raised hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda. The city clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. And although we removed the three-minute timer, we would like to ask speakers to be mindful of other speakers' time. And also, we would kindly ask if you would turn your cameras on. City Clerk, do we have any members of the public present that wish to speak today?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have a couple of speakers. First, we have Mike Foley.
Before everybody speaks, is that Jeff, have you got a rate over on the attendees list able to put on their cameras? And we're kind of requesting that. That, I can't really tell from my format here.
Yeah, they should be able to turn on their camera.
Okay.
We'll just see how that goes.
Okay, so we're encouraging anybody, everybody out there to put their camera on so we can have this like we're at a big town hall meeting here. So go ahead and start it and Madam Mayor, bring on Mr. Foley.
Mike, are you there? Maybe.
I'm here. Hopefully.
Okay, hi. We can't see you. Do you want to turn your camera on?
Yeah, for some reason it's disabled at this end. I'm not sure exactly what is occurring here. You're not missing much. Just as an introduction again, I want to really thank.
I can move in the panelists, just hold on.
Go ahead.
So we can see him. Okay, Mr. Foley, try turning your camera on now.
I think we're there. Well, we're getting there.
Yeah, we can see you now.
Okay, great. Again, I just wanted to sort of kick this off a little bit and just thank everybody for the opportunity. Ray and his team and myself and a lot of people that have been involved from the business community have had great opportunities to access Ray and his team. And I wanted to thank Ray and his staff and also the, obviously, the city council and everybody involved. And we, as a chamber, and again, I'm not speaking on behalf of the chamber, I'm a chamber member, been involved with the chamber for over 40 years. And as most of you know, I'm in the commercial real estate business. And the zoning or the general plan changes is very impactful to the community. And downzoning obviously impacts what we do and how we do it. And again, at the end of the day, our goal is to make sure that the city of Santa Fe Springs is a beautiful place to do business and live and employ a lot of people. So really, it's consistent with what we as a chamber have done over the years is really worked in a collaborative manner with the chamber and the city to try to communicate the business needs. And again, we don't always agree on things and we's always open to compromise. And again, I think this is consistent with what this meeting is all about. And it's important for us to have a place at the table. And I think that you've given us that opportunity. And again, I know you're under no obligation from the general plan standpoint to actually do anything other than listen to what we're doing or listen to our opinions. But I think it's important to get everybody at the table. And I think when we get down to the unique characteristics of the city of Santa Fe Springs, a lot of us have been around here a long time, as has the staff and council. I respect all their opinions as we respect the business community. But there's a lot of history that goes into this city and what we've tried to do to promote it. And a lot of the things that people that are on this call have done over the years, have spent millions of dollars to modify existing refineries into beautiful industrial buildings, consistent with exactly what the city wanted to see happen. And to see them sort of be facing with the downzoning issue is a real critical element to how they survive and how they move forward. And again, and I'll wrap this up real quick, there's a lot of people on this, there's a lot of developers and real estate folks on this call and involved in the chamber and the city, obviously. And they have a sort of a vast array of experiences relates to not only industrial but commercial and retail. And there's a lot of good and smart people that really have the best interest of Santa Fe Springs in mind that are involved. And again, we appreciate the opportunity to be heard and I just wanted to thank you for this opportunity. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mike.
Madam Mayor, next we have Lang Patrell.
Hi, Lang. Are you on? Hello?
Madam Mayor, it does take a few seconds for them to be, to allow them to speak. I apologize for the delay.
No, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Let's see if I can get my video to go. Oh, sorry. There you go. Start video at the bottom. There you go.
Thank you.
Good morning. Sorry about that. Good morning, everybody, and thanks. Thanks again. We really do appreciate you taking the time today to allow us to continue the conversation that we started last week at the special session, study session as well. And I'm not, we did submit, just a little bit of background. We put together a presentation and we don't have to go through that now, but we wanted to submit it something in hard copy, just outlining some of the thoughts that we shared with you last week about our concerns. And it just kind of highlights one. First of all, Goodman, I'm with Goodman. And we've enjoyed a really great relationship with the city of Santa Fe Springs over the last eight years, starting with our purchase of the Power Rean Oil Refinery and finding a way to remediate that and develop that out. And then ultimately, also purchasing the Bonds project down at Excelsior and Bloomfield, which is really the topic of our conversation and the point of our concern with the general plan, which we have expressed. We, you know, we don't, I don't want to dwell on the process, but we've, as we spoke before and we spoke again last night at the planning commission, the process through which the, you know, which this general plan has gone through has, you know, for whatever reason, the communication with some of the business folks, including some of the industrial owners, as to what the intention is and what was included in it, really didn't come to light till late in the game. Obviously, that was going, the process was going through for 20 months during the COVID process, which made it, as we all know, made it difficult to, and we all had to learn how to conduct business and continue to move forward during those and continuing challenging times. But I think at the end of the day, we, you know, we really didn't realize that 60% of our project down there at Bonds was going to get impacted through downzoning until November. So we've had the number of conversations over the last 60 days and we appreciate continuing these conversations. I think, you know, obviously, in talking and listening to the staff, the concerns and the just, the, I guess, the impetus for the downzoning of our property particularly was, is really surrounds environmental justice. And, you know, it's definitely a very important topic that needs to be considered. But we think that, you know, in this particular location, it's somewhat unnecessary and maybe misdirected. You know, this project, property has operated as a distribution center for Bonds for over 50 years prior to our purchasing. The, you know, the use did reduce for a period of time as they were moving out. But we were very fortunate to lease that and bring the jobs back and get it up and running very quickly with Maersk. We personally think that there's a, I know that there's a discussion around freeway commercial and being that along the five freeway or along the arterial, that should, you know, that lends its opportunity to perfect commercial. We would, we also think that there's an opportunity and an argument that that is a perfect location for industrial. You know, we have a lot of discussions about traffic and running through the neighborhoods and the wear and tear of the streets through the cities of Santa Fe Springs, but also surrounding cities. And, you know, the, having an industrial located right along the freeway like this gives direct access to the arterials keeping those trucks off those streets. You know, there's been some discussion, I talked a little bit about the discussion, the concerns with some of the neighboring communities and the traffic. What, you know, the reality is it's a, in, what it seems to be is that there's a number of different policy changes in some surrounding cities that are changing the traffic pattern and leading to exposure to the traffic to new residential areas who are not used to it. And, you know, some of this is proven, was proven up by studies that the city asked us to do when we did, when we, before we signed Maersk and had them up and operating. We were asked to do a traffic study to show that it was, and that the conclusions of that will show that there is roughly about 781 less trips per day going to be generated by this than Bonds did historically. We also did a noise study with, because of concerns with the surrounding neighbors. And it also showed that the existing, you know, the use of the property as industrial was not creating additional impacts to the noise, the ambient noise caused by the location near the freeways and other traffic on the existing streets was already higher than what would be caused by this property. So we went through those processes and the city did, in our mind, really did a good job of making sure that, before allowing those operations to continue, to address and do their proper studies, you know. And then, you know, and, you know, in addition to that, as part of wanting to be good neighbors with the surrounding residential, Ray and the staff asked us to consider putting a wall around the site, which we did. And, but at the end of the day, the study showed that that really wasn't going to reduce the noise because the noise was being caused by other issues. But from an aesthetic standpoint, definitely improves the entire surrounding neighborhood to the benefit of the residents. I think, finally, you know, I think that we also wanted, one of the things I wanted to talk about maybe a little bit more today is, I mentioned that we were doing a study. Unfortunately, the study isn't finalized, but we will hope to have that to you by the end of the week for a third-party economic consultant, just to analyze, you know, what the, what this potential downzoning for only our property could do to, how it could impact not only the property, but also the city's revenues. And just some highlights, value of the land could, would be reduced by 55% if under the downzoning. Total assessed taxable value for the redevelopment property would be down 50%. The duration to redevelop the site to full capacity would be from, go from three years under a full industrial to almost 25 years if you had industrial and business park, because business park is, does not absorb at the same rate. And just real, just real quick, I know I run a little bit long. But the cumulative property taxes will be hit by 65% over that 25-year period. And the economic output would be hit by 70%. So there's a lot of assumptions that go into this and analysis. But at the end of the day, a decision to downzone this property, as well as some of the others, really will have a significant economic impact and limit the economic benefits to the city and the residents. So I will, I will cut it short at this point, but look forward to just continuing the conversation today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patrell. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, next we have Moshe.
Hi, Moshe.
It seems as though I cannot allow the camera to operate, so I hope you can hear me. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my apology because I'm having a little bit of internet trouble on my end, so I can't get the camera working. So is it okay if I just?
Yes, you can begin.
So a few things. First, I want to say that we've sent some letters to the city and you have them. I'm not going to necessarily spend the time going through all the letters in detail. A couple of, a few large points. It seems as though the general plan is being driven by a few important priorities. One, of course, is the housing element, which is a state law. In addition to that, there's the requirement and the need for environmental justice and economic development, which are new categories that have been added. And what's interesting is having gone through the document that was published in November of 2021, about 60 days ago, I saw that the assumptions and the decisions that are being suggested on land use are based on information that I question as to whether it's valid. For example, the EIR assumes that the refinery, the Golden West Refining Company is operating as refinery. That's based on a 2020 AQMD or a resource board document. And there's a little footnote that personally, given my age, I had a hard time reading because it was pretty small, footnote five. And I point you to page 4.3.13 of the document. They're assuming that the refinery is operating. So when we consider environmental justice, if the refinery was operating, I would understand some of the decisions and some of the suggestions that are being made. But we all know the refinery hasn't been operating for 30 years. And the reality is that we've had a tremendous public-private partnership, one that really is a shining example of public-private partnerships where we have redeveloped a previously unusable property. We eliminated sources of contamination. And I would point you to read what the county itself concluded in looking at this project and what the positive environmental impacts have been. For example, not only have we eliminated sources of contamination and remediated the property and developed a park-like setting. When it comes to environmental justice and when it comes to emissions, has anybody mentioned the fact that Golden Springs has a very large solar renewable energy project generating on its roofs, which has a positive impact on greenhouse gases? I didn't see that anywhere. And the concern that I have is that the decisions that are being recommended by the consultants really are not based on the reality on the ground. I would like to address the issue of the housing element. The housing element, we're being told by the consultants and by the report, if we don't have the housing element of the city, and I say "we" because I always looked at the city, we look at ourselves as part of the city. We've been here for a long, long time. And so I say "we." If we don't have the housing element adopted by the 12th of February, a parade of horribles will occur. What is that parade of horribles? The parade of horribles is that we will potentially lose a grant of $333,000. The additional grants are not going to be lost unless you have until October of 2022 to address those issues. So it's really $333,000. It's an issue. And potential liability to the state. And what I would say is we're letting the tail really drive, drive the ship here. And it's the tail that's wagging the dog. And we, as part of the city and what the vision is for the next 15, 25 years, is this really the way we are going to move forward? That the business community and those who have invested in this community are only told about the potential changes in downzoning at the last moment? That's what it seems like. And I want to comment, I know that the city had a process with its consultants where we had an advisory group. We participated in that advisory group. And during the entire advisory group, I was very helpful on talking about the housing element. There's no discussion that the city or the consultants were proposing to downzone industrial and commercial properties. If that is the vision, if that's the vision for the next 15 to 25 years, I would ask, shouldn't we have a serious dialogue and have a conversation about the collective vision of this city? And what the purpose is, what the goals are, what the objectives are? And also take into account how much we have together accomplished over the last several decades in changing the tenor of this city. When I think about the process, given all of the history that we have had, where we have always worked collaboratively with the city and been partners, this process feels different to us. And there's a lot of effort that's being made to satisfy the state's requirements on the housing element. And I would suggest that serious thought be given to bifurcating, let's deal with a housing element. There's absolutely no legal requirement, there's no reason to adopt this entire study for downzoning properties just because you're trying to do a housing element. We can do the housing element without having all of this done in a very rushed fashion. And we can take our time and have the conversations and have the collaboration to come up with a product that all of us are going to work together to achieve and accomplish. We have accomplished so much over the decades. It would be a shame to me if the tenor and the relationship between the residents and the business community is changed. And then we may have a totally different relationship, which I desperately hope doesn't happen.
Well, thank you, Moshe. Thank you for all your information.
Madam Mayor, next we have Irma Witron.
Thank you.
I know we have to wait a little, a couple of minutes before she gets on. Irma, are you there?
You should be able to unmute and turn a camera off.
Hello, good morning. I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you turn your camera on, please?
Yes, one moment.
Thank you. We can see you. Yep, go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name's Irma Witron. My husband Alejandro and I are residents of the city of Santa Fe Springs. My husband has resided in the city for over 40 years. And we are homeowners here on Lake Center Park Lane. You've heard us before speaking with regard to the former Mormon church at 11733 Florence Avenue. I don't want to belabor the point that you've been hearing my husband and I talk about. I will touch upon that briefly later. But with regard to some of the comments that are coming up from the business community, I do want to extend my support with the respect that additional community outreach seems very warranted at this time. I would urge the city council to take their comments into consideration. And really, when a city is undergoing extreme overhaul of their general plan, that's creating new land uses, potential downzoning of the business community, it is very common for market study analysis to accompany a general plan. It seems like that is what the business community is requesting, that the city council take a pause and take a time, an opportunity to review the economic consequences to the city. And as a resident of the city, I think that's important for residents as well. I think we have a common goal, the business and the residents, in that making sure that the land use changes make the best economic sense for all of us, because we're all part of the city community. When it comes to environmental justice, speaking as a resident and hearing some of the comments that I heard last night and in other meetings about potential impacts related to traffic and noise and pollution, I think it goes without saying that our own consultants have told us that the city of Santa Fe Springs is in the top 5% of the most polluted cities, if I'm not mistaken, in the nation. I could be mistaken. I don't know exactly, but I know it's very high. We have a lot of, that's clearly stated in the general plan. And because of that, I urge the city council to take the business community's needs and wants into consideration, but balance that with the needs of the residents, those of us that live here 24/7 and that have to deal with the, with the consequences of asthma and cancer and all these things. I know, I've spoken to some of you and some of you have anecdotally told me that you heard of cases of high cases of cancer in certain parts of the community. And that makes you wonder what's going on. I think the data shows that clearly that environmental justice is an important topic for the city. So I ask you to balance those two topics as you're moving forward with this. And then I'll just maybe take me about 40, 40 more seconds because I've known I've spoken for long. But I've also spoke in regard to alternatives that the planning commission has. The EIR, the Environmental Impact Report that's been drafted, provides the city council with three alternatives that they can take. The proposed alternative, number one, is the project, which is to rezone and create all these mixed uses and downzone and all that. But there's other alternatives that you can look at, and that's, I made reference that in other council meetings. Alternative number two and three have ways that you can reduce the number of everything that's being proposed, basically scale down the project. And I ask you to take a look at that to see if maybe that's a solution that is, that you can look at as to address the comments of the residents and the business community. And last, I will end with the, two things related to residential properties and church sites. As proposed, the city staff and consultants are proposing to create a blanket re-designating all churches in the city. And they're saying there's an assembly bill and senate bill that are causing the city to re-change all the church sites from public facilities to medium-density residential. And I offer to you again that my comment here, and it's being misinterpreted by staff, by the way. My comment is that by creating, re-designating all those properties to medium-density, it is a blanket redesignation that's not necessary. The assembly bill and the senate bills say, don't say that you have to re-designate those for residential properties. It just says that through zoning, not through general plan, through zoning, you can allow in the zoning for those churches, when they are churches, for them to create housing. That can be accomplished through the rezoning, targeted rezoning code update that the city staff is taking. It does not have to take place through re-designating the properties from public facilities to medium-density residential. It can certainly be addressed in the language, but it doesn't need to be re-designated. And the reason that I urge you not to move forward with that is because it creates, it takes away the power from the city council to request anything from the developer and then later, later on, they're already re-designated. If they're requesting, developers requesting to redevelop a church and it's not a church any longer, then the city council can negotiate some public benefit to the city. You can get park fees, Quimby Act fees, which the city currently is not collecting for whatever reason. We're losing out on money. So just keep that into consideration. I'm happy to expand on that one-on-one if anybody wants to reach out to me. And finally, I'll end with requesting that the property at 11733 Florence Avenue be removed from a medium-density category and be changed to a low-density residential category. For comments that I've previously stated, I won't repeat myself, but thank you for your time today. I really appreciate this open dialogue and not be limited to three minutes. It's really helpful to a lot of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Irma. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, next we have R. McGee. And I apologize if I missed pronounce a name.
I'm sorry, is it, you said R. McGee?
They have it written as R.
McGahey, McGahey is the last name.
Oh, I think.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, Mr. McGay. How are you? You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now. You want to turn your camera on?
I tried. Let me try again.
Okay.
There we go.
There you go. We can see.
Okay.
Thank you.
So my name's Rick McGay. I'm with CBRE. And I've worked in Santa Fe Springs for 36 years. I want to thank the city council and the mayor and city manager. I want to thank the city council and the mayor and city manager crews for this opportunity to share my insights. As others have mentioned, I agree that downsizing and zoning in general will have an adverse effect on property values. But I wanted to speak specifically to my historical perspective on freeway commercial and the lack of measurable demand before, in Santa Fe Springs and the surrounding cities. And I'll cite some examples in chronological order. When I started in the business in nineteen eighty-six, some of you may remember, there was a carrot farm on the south side of the five freeway on the west side of Carmenita. And that was developed by the Lincoln Property Company. And they developed mixed use, they had industrial, smaller multi-tenant industrial and two-story freeway showroom. And the industrial and the multi-tenant leased readily, but the freeway showroom sat for years. And they ended up letting that property go to Roll Property Group, who had similar challenges over the years. And now that site has been largely demolished for the I-five freeway expansion. Just down from that, south on the five, in the city of Cerritos in nineteen ninety, the Cerritos Corporate Center was developed at the southeast corner of Marquardt in the five. JARIC developers built seven buildings, two industrial, four flex and one office. The two industrial buildings, we pre-leased to credit tenants. But unfortunately, the four flex buildings and the office buildings sat for quite a while. So that was, you know, obviously impacted by the savings and loan crisis in the early nineties. But they ended up losing that project to their lender in nineteen ninety-four, and JARIC went bankrupt. Later in the nineties, at the south or northwest corner of Carmenita and the five in Norwalk, the Orange County Nursery was on the market for several years. They had the opportunity to continue operating, so that there wasn't as much pressure as a developer would have, and ultimately sold that to Lowe's. So that's the one success story I can speak to on the freeway commercial side. But again, the owner had the benefit of income while they were offering that property for sale. In two thousand and six, you may recall the old Nabisco Cracker Factory in Buena Park at the northeast corner of Not in the Five. And Westred Development, a retail developer purchased that. And at the time, two thousand and six, it was an all-time high land price at twenty-six dollars per square foot. And put that in perspective, the latest land sale in Santa Fe Springs was a hundred and fifty-five dollars per square foot for industrial, not on the freeway. They pursued big box retail for years and ultimately lost it to their financial partner, Seligman, who ultimately have put the carpenters' training center on the site and a car dealership. I think you all are familiar with the city of Downey's properties along Florence on the west side of the six oh five and the five, or where the Cadillac dealership was and the big box retail, both of which have sat for years while they preferred, pursued higher uses. And finally, an RV center took down the big box retail. But again, that was after probably five years. More recently, I think you're familiar with La Marada created a freeway commercial zone along the five freeway. And fifty-one thousand square foot building on five acres, older building, you could call it blighted, has been sitting along the freeway for years. And now they did finally procure a retail tenant, but at a rent that is a fraction of what a new industrial building would have commanded in today's market. So as I said, I mean, I see adverse effects to downzoning in general, specifically demanding freeway commercial. And for the city, the adverse effects in property values and tax revenue. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. McGay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, next we have Stefan Wando.
Okay, Stefan. We'll give him a minute to get situated.
Hey, you're a panelist. You should be able to unmute and turn on your camera.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Again, we really appreciate the open dialogues. It's really helpful. So I'm a member of the business community. I work for Thrifty Oil. I also spent the last twelve to eighteen months helping with the general plan advisory group, the GPAG, which for me has been a really wonderful experience, has been really eye-opening as someone who's had the privilege in doing real estate development in twenty countries and twelve states and very, a number of large-scale real estate projects in Southern California. I really was looking forward to the opportunity to make a difference in our hometown. So I'll talk a little bit about the GPAG, and then I'll talk about a few other topics, and I'll try to keep really brief. And if somebody wants more detail, please ask questions later on. I'm told there may be an opportunity to speak later as well. So let's talk a little bit about community outreach and the GPAG. Again, it was, I think, a well-intended effort. Clearly, the GPAG has been meeting for quite some time, has been discussed previously. The residential side of it, the downtown discussion was wonderful, a great exchange of ideas, a lot of back and forth within the GPAG, and I think personally that part was successful. With respect to the commercial element, unfortunately, it appears perhaps we were rushed at the back end. But that part was virtually overlooked at no point in time as a GPAG member. Did I hear any discussion about downzoning? And no discussion around changing the land uses at the I-five freeway. None of that was addressed, let alone discussed. You know, with respect to community outreach, it was mentioned, I think it's, you know, COVID was a tough time. I know that some of the public sessions that I attended for the community were really poorly attended. Again, I don't think that's a fault of staff, but it helps explain why perhaps some people feel that communication with the public was not, was not what I think what was intended or hoped for. You know, let's talk a little bit about some of the other comments I've heard over the last, you know, few weeks. There was a lot of discussion around the land use modifications and downzoning. What I really would have loved to hear as part of the GPAG is how many businesses this is really impacting? You know, there's lots of parcels around the five freeway and around the city that were downzones. How many businesses is this really going to impact? How many businesses will be forced to relocate in two, three years, whenever the amortization period runs out? How many jobs will be leaving the city? And then tying that back into environmental justice, taking jobs away from folks, you know, from the community and the neighboring cities, I'm not sure, helps with environmental justice. But let's continue on that topic. You know, staff has suggested, or consultants, I should probably say, suggested that environmental justice requires downzoning. That's not the case, not one bit. You can go to the Attorney General's Office website. It will tell you that the goal of environmental justice is to make sure first and foremost CEQA is being followed. Second, that there is no illegal discharges, exposures to toxins, exposures to, you know, contamination. They want to look at drinking water. You go through, continue on their website, and again, I'll keep it short about the number of cases where it's been involved. And it was really around heavy manufacturing, cement plants, air terminals, cargo terminals. Those are the types of projects that I think the state was primarily focused, not the downzoning of a few properties, or in this case, a lot of properties. You know, there's references made by AQMD about a five-hundred-foot radius. Again, this is not new. This guidance from AQMD has been around for years. You know, their job is to sell air quality, and frankly, we all breathe this air. So we're all really happy that air quality has improved dramatically. As someone who lived in downtown LA for a lot of years in the nineties, eighties and nineties, the number of brownout days were substantial. There is no more brownout days, which tells you the difference we've made. At the state of California, as you all, as we all know, is pushing towards electrification of vehicles and trucks. And so is the AQMD, which has recently passed a heavy tax on trucking operators and warehouse operators. And again, they're going to spend that money to work on air quality projects. And so, you know, we're looking at making some downzones, properties now impacting lots of businesses for something that in ten years, we're going to be largely moving to a car and electrical truck element. So trying to displace jobs today for something that's already being addressed, that has improved significantly, trying to push for downzoning for something that's not required. But I'm not sure why the consultants are pushing that as the only solutions. Anyway, I can probably talk on and on, but in the interest of time, I'll stop now. But if somebody wants more information, I'll be happy to come back and speak further. But again, thank you for the process. It's been really helpful. And I'm really pleased that I've been able to be part of GPAG for quite some time.
Thank you, Mr. Wando. Thank you. City clerk, are there any other public comments?
Good morning. This is your deputy city clerk, mayor and council. Next up, we have John Ramirez.
Thank you.
Hey, you're now a panelist. You should be able to unmute and turn on your video.
Great. Thank you so much, mayor, members of the city council. My name is John Ramirez. I'm the community development director at the city of Norwalk. I have a little bit of a unique connection to Santa Fe Springs. I grew up in Santa Fe Springs until I was sixteen, went to St. Pius X High School, went to Lakeview for kindergarten, swam at the Aquatic Center, you know, every day for every summer until we moved out. And very familiar, I lived on Dunning Street, right behind what's now the Clark Estate. I was asked to attend this meeting just to talk a little bit about the interests of some of the residents adjacent to the DAMCO facility or the former Bonds location. And wanted to speak to a few points that were brought up and just express, you know, the thanks, express thanks to Ray and other members of your staff who've been very helpful and participating in a lot of communication and partnership with our staff here at the city. I know that from what Mr. Cottrell mentioned, there were studies done before Goodman took over the site. And, you know, I think, you know, there's a lot of value to having some of these studies that project, you know, what impacts could occur. You know, in my experience, I've been doing this for over twenty years. Sometimes the studies don't bear out in what happens in reality. So we have an increase in traffic along our residential streets, coming through Cerritos and through Norwalk affecting our residents. There's a lot of vibration. Folks have difficulty sleeping because of the traffic at all hours of the night. And so, you know, to the extent that the, I wouldn't call it a downzoning. I would actually just call it a rezoning of this site. You know, it looks like from the preliminary research I've done, that's actually an expansion of uses and creates more opportunity for redevelopment of the site as opposed to less opportunity of redevelopment for the site. I'm not familiar with the amortization period or the non-conforming rules in the city of Santa Fe Springs. However, generally, if the use is maintained consistently, you don't lose your vesting rights. So your land use ability to continue continues. And then if there's an opportunity for redevelopment, this business park designation will likely provide an expanded opportunity as opposed to limiting the uses that can be used at the site. So, you know, to that extent, I think it's a great opportunity for Goodman. And, you know, I think from our perspective here at the city of Norwalk, one of the things that I noticed from reviewing the proposed land use designations is it looks like the city's trying to diversify, diversify the land uses that are located in the city. When, when I was a little kid, I participated in many of the several recreation programs that the city of Santa Fe Springs offered. We went to Crestline, Catalina, San Diego. And I asked my mom once, like, well, how does the city do all this stuff? Because it was really inexpensive, you know, and, you know, the Aquatic Center was a state-of-the-art facility when it was constructed. And the swimming program relocated from Santa Fe High School over to the brand-new Aquatic Center. And I asked my mom, well, how do they do that? And she said, well, it's because of all the industry and all the businesses there. And I said, oh, I had no idea, because for the most part, all of the industry and businesses were separated from the residential. The only time I would see the businesses really is when I would go over to Santa Fe Springs Mall or go down to Premier Lanes, and you'd drive by, it was all empty fields at the time, with oil derricks and oil pumps. But one of the things I didn't know back then was the impacts of some of these businesses on residents in a lot of the surrounding communities. And as I'm looking at the area and looking at the maps, a lot of the industrial in the southern part of the city is immediately adjacent to residential communities. So, you know, there's multiple ways to affect change. It's not necessarily strictly from a land use policy standpoint. There could be evaluations of the truck routes and voluntary cooperation with the operators and the independent trucking operators to see if there's an option to try to minimize or reduce the amount of traffic impacts, noise, vibration, and damage to the roads that are currently occurring. So, you know, I think part of, part of this discussion could maybe, you know, frame some of the, some of the issues that are occurring throughout the community and specifically the impacts to Norwalk residents. Can talk about other options. Instead of looking at this land use change as a limitation, looking at it more as an opportunity and an expanded view of what Santa Fe Springs can be in the future and how we can continue the great partnership with Norwalk and Santa Fe Springs that we've had all these years. So those are just some, some ideas. I know, I don't live in Santa Fe Springs anymore. My parents moved to Downey when I was in high school. I actually, I live in Orange County now, but one of the, one of the benefits and the attractions to coming back and working at Norwalk was the fact that it was right next to Santa Fe Springs and that I'm familiar with the area. I spent a lot of time in both cities growing up. And so it's, it's kind of, it's actually kind of neat to be able to be at this meeting and speak. I know three of the council members from childhood, so it's kind of an unexpected opportunity. So, but I'll end there, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have Rafi next.
I'm sorry, Ralphie?
R-A-F-F-I, and I apologize again if I'm mispronouncing the name.
Thank you.
Okay, you should be a panelist, so you can unmute and start your camera.
Thank you. Can you hear and see me now?
We can hear you. We can't see you. You want, okay, we can see you now. Thank you, Rafi.
I think it's on now. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so good morning, Madam Mayor and council members, and obviously everybody else who's on this call. Appreciate the opportunity to provide some comments. My name is Rafi Minasian. We own a property that is on the northwestern tip of the city's boundaries. It is located on the, on the west side of the six oh five freeway behind the Dollar Storage Facility. And we submitted a letter yesterday to the planning commission as well as to the city council. And so I would hope that you've all received that letter or will receive it shortly. And you can look at some of the details there. But a couple of things that I wanted to point out, and again, out of, out of respect for time and everyone's day, we are, you know, so to summarize, we're objecting to the proposed downzoning of the property from the industrial to light industrial as contemplated by the draft general plan and the land use element that is being considered by the city. And we think that there are several unique attributes and characteristics of the property that warrant the property remaining in its current zone or zoning. In particular, the property, which is shaped like a teardrop, it is unique in that it is buffered and tucked away from all sensitive uses. To the west and to the south, the property is bordered by the San Gabriel River and the accompanying trail. And then also to the south and along much of the perimeter of the property, And then also to the south and along much of the perimeter of the property, there are railroad tracks which are no longer in use. And then to the immediate north is the Dollar Self Storage Facility that I mentioned. To the east is a 605 freeway. In addition, the property elevation is lower than the adjacent properties, which allows it to be further hidden from view. And the last point, just in terms of the location that I wanted to make, was that the nearest residential uses, and none of these are located within the city, are several hundred feet away from either over the San Gabriel River or on the other side of Dollar Self Storage and the railroad tracks to the north. So we have been working with the city for a couple of years for sure, more actively, to consider potential uses. Several potential uses we've brought to city staff. We have had others contact city staff unbeknownst to us or certainly not necessarily in tandem with us to consider other potential uses for their tenants. And during this entire process, this entire timeframe that we've had these conversations, never once were we informed that there could be a risk to the property with regards to the process that was being undertaken with regards to the general plan. We were first notified of a potential issue in November of last year, so only two months ago. And so we've obviously tried to become more involved in the process since then. And so I, again, I defer to a lot of the other people who I've heard speak both last week and yesterday evening and today as to their input, their frustrations, and again, just how aware they've been of this process. We're certainly appreciative of some of the requirements with regards to the housing element and and some of the state requirements that are being, that are driving maybe some of this timeline. But just want to reiterate that we have not been informed of this process. We were surprised at what was being proposed, in particular with regards to our property. We think that our property is clearly unique and for various reasons, again, we've outlined those in the letter. Down zoning of the property is not justified and should not take place, assuming the city moves forward and chooses not to bifurcate this process. I know that was a conversation point yesterday and and last week and and a little bit today with regards to choosing to maybe address the housing and then leaving some of these other more significant changes to the business properties or business related properties for a later time. And so I I don't want to take up a lot of time. I know I don't want to repeat what has been said by several other speakers, but just wanted to underscore our commitment to the city and our willingness to to find a use that is beneficial to the city and and, you know, has low impacts or or minimal impacts around the surrounding area, but also something that can generate and and provide to the tax base. And just by way of the activities that we've undertaken over the last several years, some of you may remember there was a large homeless encampment that was on the site that had mushroomed over some time. And and we've spent, I mean, tens of thousands of dollars is putting it mildly to to address that issue. We worked with the local community. We worked with several local agencies to find and get the individuals impacted by that, the need, the the care and the need that they that they could benefit from. And so and we did all that, obviously, from a social standpoint, as well as being a good neighbor, but also with the intent of finding a good use for this property and being able to market it appropriately. And so this proposed action would impact us significantly, and I would, anyway. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Minasian. City Clerk, are there any other public comments?
Madam Mayor, that concludes our public comments.
Okay, and, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I apologize. As I said that, there was three hands that appeared. The first one was Kathy Fink.
Oh, sure. And Kathy, are you there? Don't see her yet.
She was just moved over right now.
Yeah, go ahead, Kathy. You should be able to unmute and start your camera.
Good morning, and I want to thank the council and the city management team for this opportunity. I won't read, but I do want you to know that we did submit our letter yesterday. It went to the mayor, the council, the city management, as well as the Planning Commission. And as a number of our members have already spoke and addressed the issues and concerns that we have, we just want you to remember that the chamber has always partnered and been a great team as far as the city and the future and things that we've accomplished together. And I would just like to express the chamber's desire to look for a win-win solution for the general plan and some of the issues that have been brought to the attention of the council and the city. All I have, unless you have any further questions later.
Thank you, Kathy. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, next we have John Moore.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore, go ahead and unmute, and you can start your camera.
Hi, yes, thank you. I'm offering a comment on behalf of Prime Store. I'm sorry, my coworker and colleague Delilah Satello had to drop off to attend another meeting, some sort of submitting comment on her behalf. And I just wanted to read a portion of a statement, a letter that we at Prime Store have been, will be sending in to Mr. Morell. And just wanted this portion sort of read it into the public record. You know, we obviously were, wanted to congratulate everyone for meeting your deadline. And then we wanted, you know, basically talk about some of the requested amendments that will be submitting to the general plan process. And I'm going to go ahead and read just a paragraph here from her statement. Marketable development projects often require pedestrian-friendly amenities and available services, but until these features naturally occur in the marketplace, a general plan can provide incentives to facilitate developer entry into a target area. A set of strong guidelines ensures that regulations are market realistic for developers while being economically feasible for the municipality, including impacts on utilities, et cetera. Our suggestion is that a provision be added to the draft and final general plan amendment and rezoning designations, which allows planning staff to evaluate the economic feasibility of projects as they comply with proposed zoning ordinance changes. The added provision can simply indicate, quote, "Land use characteristics shall be tested within the real estate market to determine economic feasibility to develop under the proposed standards." For example, economic feasibility means that, given the price the developer paid for the land, a required development scenario would produce a sufficient profit to the developer to attract financing. She offers her phone number for follow-up. It's in the letter, but I'll just read it for the record, 213-814-8212. And that is Delilah Satello on behalf of Prime Store. I am her project manager for our projects that we're working on in this area. And my name is John Moore, also on behalf of Prime Store. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Madam Mayor, next we have Steve Mazura.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Steve should be able to unmute and turn on your camera.
Hi, Steve.
There we go. Good morning, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm Steve Mazura, Director of Comments with Industrial. And we did submit a letter, yeah, council, and it and it lays out some very important issues, which I think supports and reiterates some of the things that have been said today. And so we do want to really urge the council and the Planning Commission to consider separating out the housing element. We think that the importance of the business concerns and the time for them to review and have inputs and have some dialogue is very important. So we, I think our main ask really is that that you separate them out and that because you have the deadline for the housing, that makes sense. However, also it was brought up last study set patients with the EIR, but the ER can always be have an addendum or an amendment to it if you
Mr. Mazura, you're cutting off, cutting out. Okay, I think we lost him. Pretty clear.
Madam Mayor, oh, sorry about that. Madam Mayor, it it does seem that we lost connection with him. I don't see him logged in here right now. I do want to mention that based on the correspondence that were submitted yesterday for the Planning Commission, there was one that was submitted from Stephen Mazura. I could go ahead and forward that for the record. This will be available in the City Clerk's office and Planning Department for anyone that wishes to obtain a copy of this correspondence. This, I can go ahead and forward to council if this is what the he is going over. And you could review that when you have a chance.
Yeah, perfect. Okay. Are there any more public comments?
Any other comments? Oh, he's, he was able to connect now.
Okay. We can bring him back on.
Hello, I, can you hear me?
Hi, Mr. Mazura. Yes, we can hear you. Continue.
I don't know where I got cut off, but I was urging to separate out the housing element. And there was some question about the EIR complication, but that can very easily be amended and recertified for just to do the housing element and to do the other elements later. So I would urge you to look at that and have consultants look at that and work with staff. And I used to work for the city of Santa Fe Springs as a redevelopment manager for six years, so I know the city very well. Can you still hear me? I'm getting a pop-up.
Yes, we can still hear you.
And so we're always told we got to build on the city of Santa Fe Springs business strengths, which so I think we need more time to to allow that for the general plan update. And in our letter, you know, puts forth a lot of the issues brought up, the zoning, down zoning will will affect and create a lot of our properties and businesses becoming nonconforming, which affects us financially. The criminal justice element, while it is extremely important, we raise questions about the actual data that's more regional oriented or very site specific that wouldn't, that should not be resulting in a blanket down zoning. So each site should be looked at individually as the development comes through. By the way, Rexford has a policy that all new development be leave silver certified, but also does reduce greenhouse gases and pollution burdens, which was brought up as well earlier by others, with solar and so forth. And then the issue of revenues was brought up where we know the city is in the process of updating their business license tax, and we're generally in support of that as a fair share way to provide funding for the city for roads. And the business license tax has not been updated in a long time, so that's, that seems like a reasonable thing the city should do. And that is estimated to bring in $10 million a year. So some of these zoning changes, like the freeway commercial, to bring in tax revenue doesn't make a lot of sense if you're, if you're trying to rely on that for sales tax and hotel tax when the demand for commercial development along the freeway is
Excuse me, Mr. Mazura, we hear you, and we also have your information emailed to us. And so we thank you. And you have one more minute. Can you go ahead and conclude?
Yeah, and so last thing is related to that is on some areas, like the freeway, which we're talked about to, might accommodate trucking much better, so you don't have trucks driving the city, you should give us time to talk to the city and work with the city to actually look at possibly, first of all, allowing both commercial and industrial, but also possibly upzoning. There's industrials actually looking at multi-level industrial, which might make more sense along a freeway where trucks have easy access to a freeway. And that includes my comments. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mazura. Thank you. City Clerk, are there any other public comments?
Madam Mayor, it appears that we have one more from Cascade Pump.
Oh, thank you. Do you know who it is?
There's no name. It's just listed as Cascade Pump.
Come on, Cascade.
Okay, good. Yeah, you should be cleared to unmute and turn on your camera.
Yeah.
Hi, there's Scott Summerfield with Cascade.
Hi, Scott.
Our family, in addition to owning Cascade Pump, also owns some commercial property in the city. And we just wanted to voice our thanks to yourself, Madam Mayor, the City Council, and the city planning staff for holding this meeting. We do want to make known that we disagree with the down zoning as it's been proposed. We do believe that there should be a separate housing element consideration, that there should be some additional participation by the business community and that an impact study of the changes that are being proposed and how those will be reflected both economically, environmentally, and otherwise to the city, the business community, as well as the residents of the community. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Summerfield. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
City Clerk, are there any more public comments?
Madam Mayor, I think we, that concludes our public comments unless anybody else raises their hand.
Okay.
Right now, I don't see anyone else raising their hand right now, so I think that's it.
Okay, so does council have any questions for staff? And also after the question, if if staff can go ahead and comment on that.
Madam Mayor, I have a question or a comment.
Oh, sure. Go ahead, council member for you.
My, I'm hearing all, all the comments and even from the the other cities around us. And yes, our city is based around industrial and we are business friendly. And I hear their concerns and and it's very quick. We're very quick to ask the industrial area, the chamber for help when we need help with our bonds, with our passing of propositions and all that. And we're based on such a great connection we have with the chamber. I just feel that we should involve them more. And I don't really want to rush. I mean, I know it's not being rushed, but it is being rushed for the fact that we have a deadline. But with all due respect for our chamber members and our industrial, I would like to know if we can maybe do more of these or extend it so we have their their opinion and what they really have to say regarding all of these issues. It's not that I want to pass the buck to them or or we're not doing our due diligence as council members, but hearing them speak, for them taking their time. I mean, we've been on this for an hour and they've been with us other, with other meetings, and they're taking the time to give us their their opinion, their their, what's going on with their businesses regarding this. I think we should really involve them more in this process, not just a council meeting here and there or a public comment. That's just my opinion on this. I mean, I don't want to really rush more into this. I know it's a timeline, but I just feel that we need, the way they're coming out, we need to do more for them. I don't know how the council members feel.
Okay, well, let's ask. So we'll go down the line. So council member, Maura, can you give your your comments?
Yeah, you know, if this, you know, of course, you know, checking in with our city attorney and of course, our management and and our planning department, there was comments made where if we can actually bifurcate and then just separate, you know, the timelines and focus. Everything we have to do with the housing element, get through that one since we are, you know, bound by timelines, especially when it comes to grants that we may potentially lose. And also, you know, listen a bit more to our business sector. You know, myself, you know, I'm a business owner and I know we have somebody, Jay's a business owner and, you know, so, you know, we we hear our industrial community. And you know, just like Juanita had stated, you know, we appreciate, you know, the relationship between our business sector and our city. And of course, you know, the chamber that basically kind of ties us together. But I think maybe, you know, put a little bit more study sessions out there, outlining, you know, the, our, you know, our industrial sector's concerns. And then along with our planning department and of course our, our, you know, our consultant, see what is and what is not possible. We do really have to benefit both aspects here. Our residents and a primary concern, of course, is, you know, our environmental justice, particularly pollution. And so, you know, that's concerning because, you know, we have arterial freeways here. We have a lot of, you know, trucks coming in and out of the area. So I think we can, you know, sit down together and come up with a, a medium that will benefit everybody. That's my comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Mora. Councilmember Sarno, can we hear your comments?
Yeah, thank you. I agree with, with Juanita and John were saying, I think, you know, we have to talk a little bit more about the housing, but the housing we can get past, but I think the business side of it and the downsizing of some of our commercial properties and business areas. I think we need to realize that how does that affect us in the future? Our redevelopment went away and it took a long time for us to get used to not having the amount of money that we had to be able to help subsidize and help businesses do things. Now, today, we are where we're at because of our businesses. And if we take away from them, how does that affect us as a community? And I think it has to be a little bit more talked about. And as we can see it from a lot of our landowners, realtors and other people, it could affect us in the long run and it affects us by our community because we rely on the business community to help support our community, our residential community. So we have to work hand in hand right now to make sure that we are giving them what they need to, to progress and evolve in the future. Not just always think of how they affect us as, as a resident, because we have to work in, in, in a commune, in a timely manner as far as making sure that we are both together on this, not one side or another. They are not the cause and effect of everything that we do in our city. So I think that we should postpone this commercial downsizing and really talk and understand what we're doing before we do it. So.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, this is your city attorney. If there are no questions at this time, I think staff and the consultant may want to address the issues of bifurcation and what that means and maybe whether there's opportunities to engage directly with the commenters that have spoken today. So they may want to have an opportunity to address those comments.
Okay. I still want to hear from Mayor Protem Samora, please.
Actually, I wanted to hear from the staff. I thought we were going to let them answer any questions afterwards before we actually talk. So I think we might've jumped the gun on that. So I'd actually like to hear from them and then I can give my, you know, my, my words of input after that.
Okay, sure. Does staff have any comments?
Yeah, yeah. Madam Mayor, this is the city manager, Ray Cruz, and I just want to let, part of the reason we had this meeting was that the council wanted input and we're hearing the input. We're hearing the concerns. And there are concerns from both the commercial, industrial owners and brokers. We also have our residents who we are hearing from. And we also have our other audience, which is the surrounding cities. And there is a lot of residential that interface directly to our industrial zones. So I'm just going to stop at that point, but I, I feel that there are consequences with decisions we make in timelines. And we're going to lay that out right now. So we'll start with Wayne Morale, our director of planning. Wayne?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray. And I'll just start off and then I will rely on Jose and some of our staff to continue. But yes, the process can be, can be bifurcated. But there is no ifs or buts with respect to the grant. We recently received a letter that states February 28th, your grant. That's it. There's no extension. And for that grant, that is part of the housing element. It includes the circulation portion of the general plan and also the environmental justice component. And that is 333,000 that we would definitively, unequivocally lose. Now, there is the other grant of 225,000, but we have until October, within which to still remain in compliance and to complete the project so that we do not lose that money. That's in terms of process and what we will lose, that essentially is the answer. But I would like to speak on something more in terms of process. Let's just assume for a moment that the general plan amendment is adopted as scheduled. It isn't that immediately with a snap of the finger, all the uses that are in existence goes away. That is absolutely not the case. Those use will be able to remain in place. And we've not come up with a time period as yet, but let's just assume for argument that it is 20 years. So from the date that the general plan is adopted and we have this 20-year provision, those uses will be allowed to remain as is for those 20 years. And there are provisions within our code right now, which states that they can come before the planning commission, excuse me, planning commission, city council for an extension of time. So I don't want anyone to believe that will be adoption, all those uses go away immediately. I, I think it's important, important to understand, to understand that. And I would need to defer to to Jose in terms of the environmental, because I believe there are some consequences also with the environmental with respect to, to bifurcating. And I will let Jose speak on that.
Great. Thanks, Wayne. In terms of bifurcating, you're talking about separating the housing element, land use changes and the industrial land use changes. Those can, as the city council, you have the decision to make during the public hearings on what, what land use changes staff is recommending. Obviously, there are housing changes that we've made that allow for additional housing to take place in the city. We, there is a possibility of breaking up the land use, I would say the land use plan. It, there, there will be some complications associated with it. There's an environmental impact report that looks at this land use, that looks at the land use plan in total. But let's say if the council, council were to, to make, want to make the changes to the light industrial areas or the freeway business areas and take those up at a later date. We could, we could, my recommendation was, is still to bring forth the land use plan and the other components of the general plan forward and get those, and get those adopted and maintain, maintain your grants. If the, if the industrial sections want to be held back in the council to make, you know, either do additional analysis or study sessions that can happen at a later date. It does, it, it can happen as long as the EIR, as long as new changes that come forth again at a later date, don't go beyond what's the environmental impact report or the level, the level of analysis or the intensity of the development is, is higher than what the EIR analyzed. And as someone mentioned earlier, the EIR can, additional changes to the general plan that are in line with the land use plan can take place. Or we can still use the existing or the dot, the, the EIR that's bring, brought forth to look at additional changes down the road as well, as long as they're consistent with the, with the land use plan.
But in order to do that, there will be additional costs beyond the $333,000. So I just want everyone to be aware, aware of that component. Thank you. Now, there were also some comments made about about impact fees and and maybe the city should have, or the city has a Quimby Act where we can charge developers to set aside certain acreage for parks. And that is true to some degree. But before the city can do that of any developer, you have to have an ordinance in place. And it's through the subdivision map act where you can do that. But the city cannot right now, if there's a development proposal before it, charge a developer to set aside a certain acreage of land without that in place. So I just wanted to make that clear. Were there any other questions maybe for staff or the consultant that we can answer?
Yes, I have one, Wayne. Actually two. Have we considered, so we're talking about this $330,000 grant that we potentially have on the table if we don't pass the housing element, correct?
It's not potentially, we will lose it.
Okay. Well, we have to lose it.
Excuse me, um, excuse me, councilmember Sarno and Wayne. We, the housing element must be adopted per state law. And that you're, you're, I think you meant the general plan update and the grant associated with that.
No, the $333,000 was associated. That's a grant that we got for the housing element, circulation element as part of the general plan and environmental justice.
Okay. But the housing element, it's not just an issue of a grant, losing a grant.
No, no.
With state law.
But what I, what I was asking, what the question I'm asking is for the industrial, for the, the land use plan for the, to re, re-change our zoning for the industrial, because we're, we keep bringing up this $330,000. Have we thought of how much money we potentially lose by downsizing our industrial areas in potential tax revenue and, and land use? Is there, is there a loss in that revenue?
What I would say, at least for the 20 years that everyone would remain in place, that answer would be no. Because those uses would be allowed to remain.
And until they change ownerships, correct?
No, it, the, the, the general plan will not touch existing property rights. The people who have vested property rights, those rights will not be taken away. And so the, it's, it's a, it's a general plan. It's a plan for the makeup of the city. So it would have, it would necessarily need to include consideration of existing property rights.
All right. Well, then how did we come up with these rezoning areas and who made those decisions? How did we come up with putting certain areas, changing their zoning of it? How do we come up with those, those changes?
Jose, could you please expand on the process that we went through, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would say in the fall of 2020, around August of 2020, we did our background analysis. We did our, we did the existing land uses. And then through the fall, we worked with staff to identify what we call focus areas. And those are areas that we are looking at to, to change. And talking with staff, we recognized areas that where we were looking for housing and other, other areas that staff felt like, hey, we needed to take a look at these and make, and potentially make land use changes.
So staff and you guys made that decision?
Yes, we've identified the focus areas. Then we brought those focus areas to the general plan advisory group. And keep in mind, those are the areas that some of the, the members that talked about, there is about at least nine to 10 focus areas. We included other areas of the city that were not analyzed or gone further. But we looked at other industrial areas, business park areas, areas that did have impacts to residential areas. And we looked at some alternatives. We brought forth three to four alternatives within the nine, nine plus focus, focus areas. Eventually, we did a community meeting regarding the alternatives. We took the alternatives to both the joint planning commission and city council meeting where plant, city, both planning commission and city council did not adopt a land use plan, but made a kind of decisions on some of the land, land use alternatives to move, to move forward. And then a draft, what we called the preferred land use plan was affirmed, not adopted, because we, we haven't adopted a land use plan, but they, there was a vote on, on a, to affirm a draft land use plan, and that was affirmed in December of 2020. Now, we did, I do recognize that the G-PAG has identified that, hey, we also looked at some industrial areas and the freeway corridor that was not looked at closely by the general plan advisory group. Those decisions, we looked at together with, with city staff and the consultants. There are some other areas we did look at, particularly the areas along Pioneer, that industrial area that's surrounded by residential on both sides and the industrial area. That's one area we did look at and and so ultimately we made those land, industrial land use changes to reflect some of the environmental impact issues that we were, we were identifying. We thought having heavy industrial, looking at the heavy industrial uses and what those allow and having it that close to residential uses. We, the staff and consultants made the decision to make, make those changes as part of the, and bring that forward to the city council. The city council reviewed changing heavy industrial to light industrial during the December 2020 meeting. And so we brought, we brought forward those, that those changes were not brought, they were not introduced to the general plan advisory group, although other areas were, were introduced as well. So there are the summaries of those meetings on the website. You can look at some of the comments and the presentations that were made, the different alternatives to those focus areas are all on the, on the Reimagine Santa Fe Springs website. If you go to the document sections, there are summaries for the general plan advisory groups as well as the other meetings.
Okay, we have Kwong that would like to say something. Thank you, Jose.
I, I think it's important, and I'd like to offer some more information on the background of the process, particularly as it pertains to the rezoning of heavy industrial properties. I, I think it's important that, you know, everyone understands and knows that what we presented is actually a compromise. You know, if you look at the A Q M D recommendation, it's actually a thousand feet. We took 500 feet from residential properties. Additionally, you know, typically when you're trying to buffer residential properties, you really should take a limited manufacturing designation, which is our lowest industrial designation here in the city. And instead, as a compromise, we, we chose light industrial. So in the end, we felt that in addition to going down to 500 feet as well as doing the light industrial, that was a compromise. Yes, it does impact some of the potential land uses that you would typically um, you would typically be able to have in a heavy industrial zone. But i- it was done um, for a reason and basically to, to ensure the impacts to residential properties are addressed properly. With regards to freeway commercial properties, you know, I think staff saw that more as a cleanup effort. If you will note, in their current general plan, it already designates um, the area as freeway commercial. We were simply seeing that as a, as a cleanup effort. So that, that's what I have to offer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And are there any other staff comments?
Yes, yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to reiterate as it pertained to Councilmember Sarno and Jose's, Jose's response. And if I understand correctly, the December meeting was when we essentially previewed or showed the land use changes. Although we did not adopt those, but essentially we got direction and from that we moved forward. Is that correct, Jose?
That's correct. That's what the land, that's what we based the, the land use plan and the land use element and the E I R off of. We needed a, a draft plan uh, to build the, the E I R, the, the land use element off of. So yes, correct.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff or the consultant?
Uh, Mayor Pro, Mayor Pro Tem Zamora, do you have any comments?
I would just like to thank everybody for, you know, the fact that we were able to come together and actually have this dialogue. I mean, I do believe that it ran pretty smoothly. Um, you know, and that's why, you know, bringing it up in the last meeting about having this type of format, I think it helped us out. And, you know, and I know that we do have time to actually, you know, that's why, you know, I've mentioned, if, you know, we couldn't come to some kind of conclusion today, I mean, we could also, you know, talk about it on Tuesday before our council meeting, have a study session then. Um, but even if, you know, the staff and the developers, you know, or, or the business community, if they can get together, whether it be Thursday and Friday, and, you know, talk about some of these other things that are coming up, just to have the dialogue. So then we have the information. I know that, you know, when you look at everything and people are saying that they didn't know for two years, I mean, I can't really swallow that. And, and I'm a big guy and, you know, and I like to eat, but still, I don't understand how two years, you know, and nobody hears about it. Um, you know, and then now at the eleventh hour, people are coming in to talk about it, which is perfectly fine, but my still, I'm still looking, well, if the business community is saying, you know, we have this great partnership, well, where are the solutions? Where are the solutions that are helping us to make a better decision, you know, for ourselves? And, you know, I, I hear about our, you know, when, when we look at our pollution, some of the things that are taking place, I mean, some individuals are bringing up about pollution, that that's important, that we gotta do something about that. But then it's like, hey, let's not change the, the format of, you know, of, of, of the land. And, and I know none of this is gonna take place overnight and that's what it, you know, what it sounds like, you know, where the business community is actually making it sound like this is gonna happen today, then tomorrow it takes effect. You know, so that's where, I mean, we know that it's not that, you know, the pressing issue. But I know that when it comes to the, you know, when you combine both grants over five hundred thousand, I mean, that's money that we can't.
Excuse me, Councilmembers Zamora, you're on mute. You muted yourself.
I think he froze.
All right. I think I froze. Yeah, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
I don't know.
Mayor Pro Tem Zamora, I was asked to mute another speaker and accidentally hit your mute. So that was, that was my fault. I apologize. Please continue.
All right. All right, so I don't know where I left off or where you guys heard the last comment, but, you know, w- when I, when I look at everything and, you know, we do have to come to, you know, some sort of solution. We have, you know, over five hundred thousand with two grants, you know, that of course, we can't lose that funding, no matter what. That's taxpayer money. You know, when you look at grant money, that's still taxpayer money. So either way, you know, the solutions that we come up with are the solutions that the business community helps us because all I'm hearing is, hey, don't do this, don't change the zoning. Perfectly fine, but what solutions are there? You know, and that's the part where we have to be great partners with one another. Give us solutions to help us out. You know, not just say, hey, don't do this. But, you know, and, and this is the eleventh hour, you know, and we were risking five hundred thousand. And, you know, we, you know, and I know that one is state law that we have to mandate and push through as soon as possible. And I know somebody was mentioned that November of twenty twenty-two is the other grant. But yet, both grants are intertwined. So now we have a risk of gambling three hundred and thirty-something thousand dollars, whatever it may be. And I know that's not what we signed up for. So you have to understand the predicament of where we're at. I mean, I know that we have more of a dialogue. I, I'm truly happy to see how many people came on to, you know, there was over, what, sixty individuals from a participant from the business community? I wish they would have been there from the very beginning. You know, that would have been great, cause then we would have been able to get, get through this process a lot sooner. Um, whether it's staffs, you know, people wanna push and look at staff or, you know, we wanna point fingers at either way, or, or the business, it's, it's not, you know, we have to make a decision. No matter what, we have to make a decision. In the end, we just have to make sure that we get everything and we get all information correctly, whether it come from our planning department, whether it come from the business community, we have to make sure whatever it takes to, to help one other, help one another, that's gonna be the, you know, the, the main topic. So when I look at, you know, some of the sites, yeah, can we do something to be a little more lenient? Um, case by case or whatever it may be, then, then those are things that we can talk about, or I feel that we can talk about. And, you know, talking to our staff and then them, you know, talking to us, but you have to realize, we do have to make a decision, you know, that's coming up. And, and, and instead of saying, hey, we're being rushed, help us with solutions. Because saying we've been rushed and we've had two years, I mean, like I said, I mean, that's, that's really not an answer anymore. So I do appreciate all of you guys for coming out. Um, excuse me for my forwardness, but I think that's the best way that we can actually, you know, move this along. So if you guys wanna do another study session on Tuesday, I have no problem with it. And if our staff can meet together in the same format, I thought the same format worked out well. And if our staff and our, you know, and our industry partners can meet up on Thursday and Friday, talk, you know, if you guys can talk more about these um, situations, what's going on, so we're forward. Somebody's microphone is on, or I don't know if they're looking to speak.
Okay, so uh, we can arrange another study session and our staff will get a hold of council and the public for public comments. Uh, that's not it, that's not a problem. That's a great idea. So at this time, I'd like to thank all our speakers uh, that came out and talked, our industrial, our residents, our chamber of commerce. And if there's nothing more right now, again, we will arrange another study session and our staff will get a hold of each council to uh, check the date. And if, if there's nothing else, uh, I would like to adjourn this meeting.
Madam Mayor, before you adjourn, are you asking us to do a study session next Tuesday? Is that what the, the will of the council is?
I would, I would like to uh, have our, uh, I would like to have our staff get a hold of each council member and go ahead and coordinate another study session.
For next Tuesday or any other time, you're, you're saying, you're leaving that open or you, or you asking?
I'm leaving it open. Yeah, I'm leaving it open.
Okay.
If everybody's available uh, on Tuesday the eighteenth at uh, maybe we can do it at five, but we've had this meeting for two hours. So if we do it at five, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna run over. So it, it's up to, I would like our council members to decide if they wanna have it on the eighteenth. We can decide right now if our council members would like to. Uh, I'm okay with Tuesday the eighteenth. Uh, I'm okay with any other dates.
Let me ask one, let me ask one question, Madam Mayor. Um, uh, Madam City Clerk, do, do we have anything scheduled for a study session um, outside of this topic on, on the eighteenth? As of yet?
As a city manager, at this moment, we don't have anything scheduled at five P M. for next Tuesday, so it is open.
Thank you.
Okay, if, if every council member is good with five o'clock on the eighteenth, then that's fine. Uh, if you wanna go down the road, can, can we get uh, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Zamora, are you good with five o'clock on Tuesday?
I'm good with that.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you. Councilmember Sarno?
Yes, I'm good. And I also have a, a request. Could we have staff give us a little bit of uh, the pros and cons of, of rezoning the certain areas of, of these uh, industrial parts of the reason why they came up with those conclusions and, and how it benefits and how, what's the pros and cons on it? Please.
And Jay, if I could add to that, make sure it has a lot to do with the people that are speaking.
Yeah.
You know, like, hey, not to take the time, because if not, then we're gonna open the door for other places.
One hundred percent, yeah, no, you're right.
They didn't take the time to actually, you know, take time out of their schedule, so.
Just to give us the pros and cons of it.
Thank you, thank you for those, 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 great. And Councilmember Mora?
Yeah, excuse me, yeah, I'm, I'm good with that date.
Okay.
And also, if I just could, just add one more thing, uh, maybe also either the, with um, you know, with uh, Jose and staff, you know, have answers to the questions that were posed by those that were present uh, today. Uh, that'll be helpful too.
Okay, are we looking for those any, uh, I mean, Tuesday's just around the corner, so can we get that this week?
Yeah, even if they get it to us by Monday, that would be fine. I don't know if you guys are okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I have a question. So I, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Zamora, you suggested that the consultants, I think, and the business members meet. Are they still gonna meet on Thursday and Friday? And then that we will have their input too from that?
I, I, I would want that only because then everything that you, everyone is asking for, like, so what Jay brought up, what you brought up, John, myself, Annette, it just makes it easier because I know they have a dialogue. But yet, you know, we're getting different dialogues from both sides. You know, so we just wanna make sure this actually, actually now helps us out because now everyone's giving us the same dialogue and it makes it easier for us that, you know, we're not going into it with our eyes closed, you know, so I just think it's helping us out.
Perfect. Like, whatever they discuss, you know, they could get together Thursday, Friday, then we can get that information.
On Monday.
Something, yeah, something simple, nothing, yeah. Perfect, thank you.
That's great. Okay, so we're all in agreement for January eighteenth at five o'clock at our next council meeting. Uh, again, thank you to all our speakers and.
Madam Mayor, can I just um, ask one question?
Sure.
Uh, I know we've had some leadership, Mike uh, uh, Foley has kind of led that group with Moshe and Lang. Are, are, are you three available uh, Thurs- Thursday or Friday with, to meet with staff to have some of these discussions? I'm just looking if someone can get off their mic, they can answer that between the three of them.
Uh, yeah, this Lang, I'm, yeah, we'll, we'll make the time. So just let us know what works. We'll move things around.
Okay.
Great, okay. And you could give council the information on uh, when they're meeting and uh, you know, the date and time. Okay, thank you. If everybody is uh, in agreement, we will adjourn this meeting at ten forty-nine. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good day, baby. Thank you.